Good evening, everyone. I'm making the meeting to open session. The regular meeting of the 72th Board of Education. It will be held in 2022. We have already established that we have a board at the meeting. So I will just remind myself to please sign up your cell phones and join me in the meeting. Thank you. Let's break into the opening of our minutes. So I have a motion and a second to approve the opening of the session minutes for September 21st, 2022. I'll second any changes or corrections to the minute. All those who may say aye.
Aye.
Any of us say nay. Okay, so next, can I have a motion and a second to approve the payment of the bills in the amount of $829,582.
Second.
Are there any questions? Good, okay, enough said, move the secretary, please call the board.
Yes, Ms. Bushy. DePacis. Dammie. Mr. Noy.
Yes.
Ms. Brown.
Yes.
Excellent. So ETA, do we have a number with ETA to report? Oh, excellent, thank you.
Good evening, I'm speaking a lot of medical colleagues. We've had a lot of stuff going on, a lot of thank yous to give out on October 4th, we had our PTA acting and we thought that it was a big part. And we mentioned last month, we bring forward here at different areas and we actually really liked the way it turned out in our department. People, that was a positive experience then. We appreciate that everybody that came and that helped out and all the local businesses that don't make it. We also had our spirit where order hold about 10 days ago, so we want those guardians to come out and get back. We're hoping by this or hopefully this one thing still. We also had, in the past couple of years, we've had a lot of need for parents and guardians to volunteer for a lot of culture positions. And we're happy to say that almost all of them are full now, so we appreciate how the parents and guardians have been setting up to help culture. We were that that we're hoping to do. In a partnership with the student council, we found a helping partner last couple of weeks for the families that have come from Venezuela. And we'll probably see that a lot of items have been donated. Really proud and happy that the community has come together and is so generous for these events. We have, we had a benefit night weeks ago, both that Chucky Cheese and then we also have a night at Montezum. Of course, the process is both the PTA, so they could have looked through what's happened and actually the PK by crazy. Events that are coming up, we have the Friday, October 20th, from 6 to 9 p.m., we have the first PTA holiday party in three years. So we're happy about that, and the culture, the part of work trying to bring that event back to us, right? We had a lot of big four parents passing, and guardians who are prepared for fun activities that we tell on Monday, October 31st, where our fall on passing party. On that day, and then our next charity meeting is Wednesday, November 9th, 6:30 here in the auditorium. And then our next benefit night would be at the Village Cross and Chapel May, on Wednesday, November 16th, on Friday.
Wow, just as big, it's so good to see that we have a family who's coming to office, it's just so much fun.
Very, very excited.
Thank you definitely. Thank you very much. Thanks, so next, our agenda is the administrative reports. First report on my this evening is. School activity. So do you have any other things to share from the list?
Could be, could be our first. Also, there are a lot of other stuff that's on the screen. Probably years back, we made one very important.
Good evening, so there's lots of stuff to share. One of the most exciting things, the next Friday, the 20th day, we are going to have our hashtag one year rally day. Most of our parents have not been made aware yet, national funds, private teacher back then. But this day is going to highlight looking through diversity. So primary will have an auditorium rally where we have some information. Our student equity advisor committee is kind of spearheading this event, so really excited about that. And then our most interesting will also have the same here and out of someone who's been there. So really excited about that, it's just an opportunity for us to highlight looking through all the first people this year here. And to celebrate what we're seeing and highlight the reports and that. We'll do a little bit of talking about microaggressions and different ways to support all the diversity. And of course, our no hate speech stamp that we take here, so we're very excited. Working together for the last month, so it should be fun, it should be amazing.
Our, our duty is good things. We had a meeting, so we have that talk, we're meeting about, so we can potentially share all the parts that we're creating. Well, with primary buddies, so teachers that did suffer to pick off both the place. And we had our first meeting, we saw the pictures of that classroom, and also here on children, about yesterday, they did the classroom, they were like, play in the hall. They're excited and they're hoping to do this special back in the primary classroom, so we will be able to see our main school. So we can really interact. They will be a red card, something paper back, they need those people writing really well, that picture. And you know that we're a lot of other activities, like in classes, and that's great, we'll be working. I get to be able to take off those, and kind of, you know, there.
I'll just share. I'll share one. We thought about the school, students think the school is a big school, you know, you want, so just the fact that like, I've heard kids talking about it. This is a nice idea.
Then, I'm, yeah, we'll be able to administrative reports. And our first report is from leading often, who's doing this, to talk about student data. Thank you. Introduction. Review and many other aspects. Many others. Related data. So. Masters. You feel that you got it. That's what I hear. Okay, the writing. Good evening. Okay, uh, thank you very much for having me so nicely back. And it starts to get to a point where we're almost at. Um, if I am a teacher, so if you have questions, please ask me, because I like questions and helps me make sure that I speak. So just a little bit there, a lot of different data types, I'm sorry. Okay, so I don't have a problem, I know, I'm just. Okay, a lot of different data that you use in the district. And the one that I'm going to focus on tonight is basically one of those pieces that you look for achievement data. So it's not weird, it's not ability data, this is achievement data, this is what students report. Right, and what you use in this district is NWA's MAP, so people call it. It's like a new one that we put up, short little acronyms for this. And so MAP basically stands for measures of academic progress, which is what this test is supposed to do. Okay, so, one, there are two different measures of MAP that we're going to look at. And Cindy, the first one is what's called an achievement percentile. So we're all pretty familiar with what a percentile is. What it does is it takes the average bit, which is the raw score that student receives on that. And, and they're using the grade average bit, right? So it's not individual students, it's the overall grade, what they have for an average, and it's compared to the NWA. And so there, this test of achievement, your district uses, a lot of districts use, has one of the most robust norm samples. So when it's compared to norms, it's compared to a lot of different places across the country, and there's. So what we're going to look at today are just the spring percentiles. At the NWA, you guys take this three times a year, so you get percentiles three times a year. What we wanted to do, just give you a little brief picture tonight, is the spring percentiles is where the students end up. So it's where that percentile of the grade after the end of the year. In the spring, what we'll try to do is show you all for this year compared to the spring. So you can see the growth, the percentiles, due to, shall I say, very interesting educational setup over the last couple of years. As we've tried to make sure students are making growth, it's kind of hard to make those comparisons. So we're just going to look, and these are, it says 2021 to 2023, because the goal is this slide, 50% of the spring. It's kind of a summary of the year, so we would have three years of data to compare. So these are the two years with the COVID, the lovely COVID effect, right? And what this is basically saying, so I'll pick on fifth grade, seventh grade. 66% is, was the percentile in the spring of 2021, where our fifth graders were in comparison to all fifth graders that took MAP at the same time as they did. And then last spring, the spring of 2022, 79%, that 79%. So that the student average bit for the fifth grade was better than 79% of the norms. Yes. Yes. Okay, so this is a national, this has been one for everybody, this is the 2020 norms. So these are pre-COVID norms, okay? And these are pre-COVID norms, and we're compared to everybody that took MAP in 2020. Right, so what the good thing about this is we've got, there's, that's several that have increased, several that are staying constant, so that's breaking. This is MAP, and then we have the. Right, so again, what we're looking for, we want our percentiles to at least be the same, hopefully, at the end of each year. And with this, with the COVID experience, hopefully, that you're not trending down, because that's what's kind of happening. Any questions on percentiles? Then hopefully this spring, after a quote-unquote more normal year, we will see back up to the percentiles that we're used to seeing.
Question about the second grade.
Yep. Right? And the next year, yes. So they're not the same kids, no. So to look at the same kids would say, it's the 90% second grade and then 84% third grade. Does that make sense? Okay, so they're not the same kids or the same grades. And that the difference in the second grade is pretty much consistent with what we've seen with like the K2 was written in it hard. Now, I know the kinds of third grade teachers. Okay, so. But wait. What we want to see in the review is, do you want to see your spirit, your grades in the top 25%? Right, because if you have a very good district, do a lot of great things here, so that's what we're looking at. In terms of percentile, there's nothing, you know, NWA has their 50%, but, and that's kind of the median that they call for each grade. But this is again, the average bit of the entire grade. So there's not really like a number that you're looking for. But what spare view is looking for, what we've seen over the last nine years of that year, is we're really looking to be in the top, at least 25%. That, that we didn't have. So that's basically their score places them in the top 25% of all seventh graders that took MAP at the same time they. All right, so that's percentiles, that's kind of the comparison to, you can say, how well your students performing compare nationally. The next piece is the one that's, that I find is more important, and that is, is what, it's a teacher that you want to see, and that's what's called typical. Growth goals are established by NWA, again, they're based on 2024, so this was pre-COVID, so not COVID, what they've seen over the last couple of years, what they saw in 2020. And your growth target is determined by the fall grit score that each student receives. Each student has an individualized growth goal. It may be a lot of the same, but the idea is where you were in fall, we're going to set a growth goal for where you should be in the spring. And so when we look at growth, we really want to look at fall to spring, because fall to spring is what we as a district have impact on. You don't have any impact on the summer, you got impact when they come in in the fall, to when they leave in the spring. Right, so that's one of the reasons that we choose the fall to spring method. The idea is to update this then every spring. So for the last two years, each of the MAP growth, we graph, sorry, growth percentiles. So let's pick our little seventh graders. So in the spring of 2021, 44% of students met their growth target, where their typical growth is set by NWA. Last spring, 55% of the second graders met their growth target. Does that make sense? What NWA says is that a high performing district would be around the 60 to 65% of students making their growth target. There are a couple of really good things about this slide. So what it basically, what's looking at is that the growth is increasing each year, right? And what we're going to see, so every year, I mean, so 2021, like for the fourth graders, only 35%, but in 2022, 49%. Hopefully, then in the spring, we'll see a higher percentile, percentage of students making their.
Did you say that the NWA says that high performing districts do better than 65%?
So they have 60, 60% of their students make their typical growth. Does that make sense? Because a lot of people sit there and say, well, why can't 100% of kids make growth, right? Because that's what we want to see. If we start playing with 100, it's just not, because the growth goal is the average growth for that grade. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Any questions on this metric?
2019, 2020, what were they, to be, 2020, a big dip?
Well, the issue, the problem that we have with MAP is that we only had one year of COVID dip. So we really want to look at years that we can compare. And so that would have been like an outlier, like a weird anomaly, and so that's why we're looking, we started with 2021 and 2022. Look at that three-year pattern, because it's, it's really hard to then compare to a, a typical year, where you can, you don't know how you could have done here before. So that was part of the. This was MAP, and then here's reading. Again, see, percentage of growth is increasing, which is what we want to see, what we'll expect to see as students get a more traditional year of education. I don't know, it's an observation, a question, but I will put that end here. You know, reading this. When I found as a teacher, like, the one I took the biggest to fix, right? If you look at our district, am I correct in understanding that during the COVID years, our growth, our growth target went up and hit more? Yes. And then, okay, so, yeah, so that first year of COVID, where a lot of it was mainly. Spring, like, I think we went right after they tested. Maybe they tested that. No, that was spring 2020. Okay. Yes, so 2020 was for that year, for a little packer year. Correct. And then spring 2022, it was then after a whole year, everybody was here, but people were out, they had mobilizations in the 10th, 14th. And it's still me. I'm taking that as a good thing. No, absolutely.
And all the stuff. The percentage we want, like, how about the growth and all that kind of stuff?
Graduation. That's what we don't have back in here. So that's basically what will happen then in the spring, is we'll come back with these same, same slides to then say, what, show what happened then this last year.
Sorry, just have one question. So, so I understand the grade level breakdown. So this is looking at the growth from fall to spring.
Correct.
Across these two years, across the grades. Is, is there any benefit as a district, right? You mentioned that 60%, right? And so for the math scores, if we average across, right there at about 60% as a school, as a district, is there any benefit to that? Or is it much more specific, grade-wise?
So there, you want both pictures. For your job as the board, it's really kind of the overall district, right? So you want that far right that says 52% of students met their growth last year, which is great. And as a grade level teacher, I want to get into what grade level is doing, and what I can do there to support them. And as Cindy pointed out, what we're really seeing is how we address the gaps that kids have from the last two years of. And looking. Well, thank you very much, Melissa. Thank you. Okay. Some challenges. The main strips. We may be putting very into it, and. Getting on the bus. Hey, are they coming, are they coming? And we'll actually have signs and posters in front of us, so it's just been. That has really.
Disruption magic changing gears. Shortage. Strategizing. Very exciting. Do have the nation. Um, but again, our, our teachers and our students. Field track. So. Just so proud of them. That's it, same types of things that people work on. We have a chance. Very well off course. New teachers. So. Pretty much international. So we can see where the. Knowing yourself. Bringing all of our staff. Didn't make sense. Teachers to prepare.
Okay, and so finally the district report that we. 2022, the plans to IAS resolutions. So. This is. Uh, this is the report that the IAS. And it contains the resolution that we propose back to the districts of and state. Um, these resolutions are what are. Proposing that the IAS will post their resources to pursuing these legislative actions. Um, so these resolutions are presented by the IAS Department, which is in November. Um, and it will be the document for this board. And so there will be a vote of all the following districts at that point as to whether these resolutions are adopted by the IAS Department, therefore sued with legislators or not. Um, there isn't difference this year. Um. You may remember it in the past years, that the proposals were getting. Many, in the past few years, we've had a percentage of 12, 13 proposals. Um, and proposals for resolutions, and it is making the whole thing, it's too long. Uh, and so what they've actually done this year is there is a proposal of new resolutions. There are the amending the existing resolutions, and then there's a whole long list of lengthy, that's two, eight. That are, do not present. And what they actually decided, the IAS committee was that they feel those ones are actually just not worth considering. So they're not going up for the vote, the meeting of the IAS Department, they won't be considered at all. So the ones that are being considered are the ones that need to be reviewed at this point. And by November, it is decided by the board whether we're going to support the resolution or not. Um, so this report is available to all of us, and it is accepted to you. And we either go with the recommendation of the definition of it, or we could go our own way. And so I just need to know which one we're going to vote. And so there are one, two, there literally is only three new regulations. So I'm going to go through really quickly, what is concerning, um, financials that we have scores. At the moment, there is no actual law that establishes what I mean, the maximum compliance is that the school district can actually hold. Um, there is what's known as a miller issue, which says that it should not be more than two years worth of funding. And they're actually proposing that it should be, um, changed to, um, three years. So in other words, a school district could not hold more than two years worth of funding. In their. Um, so there are obviously objections before by groups in the past or districts that have had much fun in that. But they consistently are people that have more than three years' worth, not less than two years' worth. So the committee is actually ready to adopt it. So the next one is, um, concerning alternative school plus funding. Um, the proposal is that the. Um, should support that the government should, federal government should provide funding to school districts to move over to zero emissions school buses. Um, the proposal about the resolution committee is that, um, council position is not currently funded. That they should be, um, they're concerned that the funds are actually directed to this particular project of moving towards zero emissions school buses, that they're actually taking moral away from the funds that support these schools. So their innovation might not be adopted. And third one is about, um, firearm deal allocation. Currently, the law is that. It could not be a, um, small or in the parent retail facility, sales around within lighting the food for school. And that's actually the standard to be keeping with the story. The committee listens to this, is not. The. View of that is that those that are currently within 15 feet or still have exceptions. And they're looking at potential for the projects could still be within 15 feet, so that. Um, and they're being, this is, it would be better for legislative action to be focused in other areas. At to aid, say to in schools rather than something about the distance between retail facilities and the street. But again, as far as things that we do not adopt. So I will go through all the elements, this would just go to be. This, in the sedated tool, for members of the community. Have been coming there for which is. Whether we go with the resolution. Foundation on which goes. Or when we. We support these, uh, new resolutions. Okay, so that's about for this month and all the ideas. So moving on to, um. Yes.